Good evening and welcome. I will call the Yakima City Council meeting of September the 6th, 2025 to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Berg?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
D'Isio?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Thank you. Before we move on this evening, the council would like to take a moment of silence for some of the tragic things that have occurred in our nation over the past week. Deputy Mayor Brown is asked to share some thoughts.
Yeah, I just think this last week has been difficult for our country and a multitude of things, and so I think it would just be good for us to take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us on that. We'll now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll have interpreter services.
Para aquellos que necesiten de la ayuda de un intérprete tenemos el sistema y estoy disponible para hacerlo.
Gracias. Thank you. Next is public comment. There will be 35 minutes allowed for public comment, and each person will be allowed two and a half minutes. So when you come to the podium, please give us your name and the city in which you live, and you'll have two and a half minutes to speak. Want to remind everybody that state law prohibits electioneering at city facilities. During public comments, speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates, or support or oppress, oppose any ballot measure in the upcoming election. Does any council member wish to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Public comment.
Pardon?
Public comment.
Oh, I skipped a space. Okay, let's start with public comment. The first person is Paul Edmondson.
May I defer my comments to take our president first? He has some interesting information.
If you've...
Yeah, he just wants to flow.
Oh, you're going to, okay. Would you like Ken Johnson to go first? Is that your request?
Yes.
You may do that. He has residence in Yakima.
Okay. He must go second.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ken.
No take backs.
Paul Edmondson, Vice President of YVT. I urge the council to adopt the negotiated contract to operate the city trolleys. Ten-year contract. It's been a long negotiation. The contract's very favorable toward the city, especially compared to previous contracts. The city probably has 95% control of everything we do under the new contract, the ten-year contract, and the city is very well protected from their vantage point. Maybe a little too protected for some of our members. But in any event, it's a contract we can live with and operate with. As far as I know, there are no other groups which have come forward or even expressed an interest in operating the trolleys. So basically, it's YVT or no trolleys. We do have two exceptional grant writers on our board who have secured hundreds of thousands of dollars for the trolleys to the benefit of the city, and we desperately need to return to Seela. We did get a grant for the bridge repairs and return to profitability. We've been operating at a loss the last couple of years with just the Pine Street line. But we do operate the trolleys, and we're ready to go forward and appreciate approval on a new contract. The three-year contract expired last spring, I believe, and it's time to renew.
Thank you, Mr. Edmondson. We appreciate that. Next is Ken Johnson.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, city staff. Ken Johnson, President of Yakima Valley Trolleys. What I was planning to tell you tonight is that I know that you've been hearing a lot of information about the trolleys, and a lot of it is not grounded in fact. And what we would ask is that the council would meet with the trolley organization and just have a long discussion about what's going on with the Seela line and everything else, what costs are coming our way, things like that. We can give you the straight information because we're the people on the ground. Our volunteers are doing all the work of keeping the railroad alive, and we would really like to just meet with you and talk with you about it and give you true information. I think that's what you need. The other thing I was going to mention, we have some really interesting statistics now. We sell all of our tickets online, and so we know where everybody comes from who buys our tickets. And the statistics for the first three months of this year are 62% of our riders are from outside of Yakima, 15% are from outside of the state entirely. And this is again, for the first three months of this year, we've had riders from 21 different states and from six different countries. So the point is, we bring in a lot of tourism dollars to the city, and we hope that you appreciate that when you think about renewing our contract. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next is Patty Graff.
I'm Patty Graffy from Seela, and I just came from the dentist, so I'm still numb, so sorry about that. I serve as the Executive Director of the Seela Downtown Association. I'm also a friend of the trolley, and my husband is currently training to be a motorman, so I'm real invested. I've had the joy of riding the trolley twice this summer, and tonight I'm here to advocate for it and hopefully clear up a few points of misinformation. Much of this confusion can be easily settled by visiting the trolley or riding the trolley. The Pine Street route runs entirely on electricity, not diesel. The trolley's only office is the Trolley Barn, not elsewhere. And since the stoppage of the service of Seela, there's been vegetation growth and other things because it's been three years. So as Greg Johnson shared earlier this month, both the damaged track section and the vegetation can be removed by volunteers. I encourage you to trust but verify any information you receive, even from me. The Yakima Valley Trolleys are already listed as a national registry on the historical places on just intact interurban railroad in North America. As I'm part of the Main Street America through my other job, Washington Main Street and the National Trust, I'm a contact with all the people working to secure our national historic landmark status personally, and they are super optimistic. But to qualify, the line must remain interurban. That means between Yakima and Seela. And that's a really important part. Financially, the Seela route is vital. It brings in far more revenue than the Short Pine Line. Until this year, the city provided $10,000 annually for our expenses, and with this new contract, they're going to provide the $4,700 for the insurance, which is awesome. The trolley organization has secured grants for bridge repair, barn suppression, fire suppression, car restoration. We do all those things ourselves, which is awesome. Meanwhile, the city invests $150,000 in Capitol Theater, $60,000 in the Sun Dome, both important, but so is the trolley. It draws, as he said, 62% of the riders from out of town. It's not a transportation issue. It's history and tourism, we feel. Cutting the trolleys won't fix the transportation gap that Yakima has, and it's a big one. I get it. And I also feel like the trolleys are not theirs. We're not the trolley people, but it's ours. They're part of our community. It's part of Seela's community, and with care, they can be part of everyone's. I appreciate it.
Your time is up. Thank you so very much. Next is Greg Johnson. Is Greg here, or is he online?
He's online.
Mayor Byers, he is online.
Okay, thank you.
And I am promoting him to panelist as we speak.
Thank you.
He should now, oh, in a moment, be able to turn on his microphone and his camera.
Hi, guys. Sorry, there's always a second when a transition's over. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm Greg Johnson with the Yakima Valley Trolleys. I wanted to share just a few of the reasons why I'm very optimistic about the year and even just the months ahead for the trolleys. We just launched on TikTok and already have 40,000 views on our first video, and many first-time riders are coming to us because they saw us there. We are currently developing a partnership with a local brewery, which will see a trolley-themed beer released. Our volunteers are planning a program with the schools for education curriculum and trolley field trips. Of course, we do expect a decision from the National Park Service on the national historic landmark eligibility. Our skilled volunteers have numerous restoration projects underway which improve the value of the city's asset at no cost to the city. We are expecting delivery of a trolley, which is currently undergoing a full rails-up restoration in the professional shops at the Northwest Railway Museum in Snoqualmie. And lastly, we're adding capacity to our Halloween and Santa trolley events this year because they both sold out completely last year. And honestly, that's only like 10% of the stuff we have going on. So I think over the past year, with all the discussions about Sixth Avenue, perhaps sometimes our conversations with you have focused a little bit too much on that one topic and not enough on sharing with you guys all the good that goes on at the trolley museum. So I hope that my comments tonight have helped illuminate some of that for you. I did also want to offer a reminder, tonight is not a budget session. Tonight is not a decision about Sixth Avenue or Seela Gap or anything else. It's simply the operating license which we need in order to continue providing our current service that is enjoyed by tourists and locals alike. In particular, I'll reiterate, in the next few months, we expect record attendance at our Halloween trolley and Santa trolley events, which are attended by thousands of visitors, many of them year after year as part of their family Christmas traditions. I'll close at that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I just want to remind you that our door is always open. We're more than happy to speak with any of you, and perhaps it can be over a pint of that new trolley beer.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone else online who would like to address the council?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you very much. That will end the public comment section, and now we will get to...
Nothing.
Okay. Some said you. Open discussion for the good of the order. We're going to start with a proclamation from Yakima Freemason Day, and the council has council opportunity to read the proclamation. All of those in favor of reading the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So I heard five ayes. Are there any noes? One? Okay, so it's five yeses and two noes, so we will move ahead with the proclamation. Thank you, council. And Councilman Herrera is going to read the proclamation.
Is there anybody who can accept the proclamation?
Is there anyone here? It should be David Douglas. Is David here? Please come forward to the podium.
All right. City of Yakima proclamation, whereas on September 27, 2025, Freemasons in Yakima will celebrate the 150-year anniversary of their lodge in Yakima, and whereas the Freemasons of Washington are a fraternal organization committed to attracting and retaining all men of high quality who strive for self-improvement and the opportunity to make a positive difference in their community, and whereas Cobalt Lodge Number 24 was originally called Yakima Lodge and was the 24th Lodge recognized in the state of Washington in 1875, whereas today Cobalt 24 is the 18th oldest Masonic Lodge still meeting in the state of Washington, and whereas Yakima is proud to have hosted the Great Lodge of Washington Annual Convention over the years, including 1915, 1960, 1967, 1977, 1996, and 2017, and whereas in 1964, over 1,400 men in Yakima were active in the Freemasonry, and today there are over 167 members in Cobalt 24, and whereas we join with former North Yakima Mayor Joseph Barton, who stated in a station-wide gathering of Freemasons in Yakima in 1915, "I therefore deem it a great privilege as well as a great honor to welcome you to our city." Now, therefore, I, Danny Herrera, on this behalf of the City Council hereby proclaim September 27, 2025, as Yakima Freemason Day in the city of Yakima, dated the 16th day of September.
Would you like to share a few words with us, David?
Well, I just want to say thank you very much. We really appreciate this.
You are welcome.
Come around and shake our hands.
Do good work.
Thank you very much.
Oh, all of you gentlemen were here together. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Yes. All right. Now we will move to what I tried earlier. Oh, council reports. I didn't do that. We have no council reports tonight, so now we will move to the consent agenda. Items listed are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without a discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the agenda?
Item H.
H, all right. I would also like to remove item F and item G. So clerk, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Item 7A is approval of minutes from the September 2, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting and September 9, 2025 Study Session. Item B is approved payment of dispersments for the period August 1 through 31, 2025. Item C is August 2025 Investment Transaction Report. Item D is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with JUB Engineers, Inc., to design the airport crosswind runway for rehabilitation at the Yakima Air Terminal McAllister Field. Item E is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce for a grant of $249,290 for the construction of a public swimming pool at MLK Junior Park.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Herrera to adopt the consent agenda as read. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We need a roll call.
Yes, we do need a roll call with the resolutions. Thank you.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
D'Isio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 7-0, and resolutions are adopted. Thank you. So we're going to return to the three items removed from the agenda. We'll start. I asked to remove items F and item G. They are related, so I'd like to address that as one particular issue. And I think, who is here to address?
Lieutenant Kevin.
Lieutenant Kevin, welcome.
Good evening. So items F and G are two Washington Traffic Safety Commission grants that we are receiving this year. The first one, item F, is a renewal of our dedicated DUI grant that we've been receiving the last two years from the Traffic Safety Commission. So this will be the third year that they funded that. In addition to, so this is the second of two. We renewed one in July that was based off of state funds. This one is actually coming out of their knits of federal grants. So this is the second of the two DUI cars. So this fully funds an officer and overtime costs for them to go out and do nothing but DUI enforcement for the entire year. So that's item F. And then item G is a new project that we've been working on with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to fund a regional crash team. We started this project this last year by purchasing some equipment, so they purchased a brand-new $50,000 digital scanner that we use for scanning traffic collision scenes as well as crime scenes. And then this grant here is the second part of that which will move towards training officers and also providing reimbursement for any overtime that we use whenever we have to call investigators out to investigate serious injury or fatal collisions. It's also part of a larger regional project that's going to tie in with the sheriff's office in a couple of smaller cities that are going to also have investigators trained that we can use on not only crashes in our area but also elsewhere in the county, with all of that overtime and training expense being able to build back to this grant and reimbursing the city for that.
Wonderful. So would we train people from another city? Were going there and we're training them, or they're coming here?
We would be attending the same courses. We wouldn't be providing the training. We'd be enrolling them in the training through the Washington, through the Washington State Patrol, who provides most of the advanced collision training that we have in the state. And then this grant would then fund any costs that are associated with that, whether it be lodging, travel, if it's, you know, Tri-Cities, or if they have to go to Seattle. Normally, we would be paying for that anyway, so this is actually just a way for us to kind of help roll some of these costs into a grant to help get some assistance with addressing some of the traffic safety and impaired driving issues that we have in the community.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? Comments? I want to make a comment. I actually took these items off of the agenda because I wanted to recognize the work that the Yakima Police Department does to garner some of its own funding. You know, you do a lot of things, and writing grants is one of them. I just want to give you some kudos for that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, we've been really appreciative of the support from the Traffic Safety Commission. I think this, between these two grants and the traffic safety, we're probably close to half a million dollars annually that we're getting currently from them in grants, in one form or another. And obviously, as we know, that any amount helps, and half a million definitely helps, so.
It very much helps. So, thank you, Lieutenant Kevin. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
All right. These are both resolutions, so we'll need a motion and a roll call vote.
I move to adopt items F and G.
Second.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to adopt both item F and item G. We'll take a roll call vote, please. I know she would like to read them first, then we'll...
Item F is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Washington Traffic Safety Commission for impaired driving emphasis patrols and community outreach. Item G is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to provide funding to the city of Yakima for the law enforcement regional crash team.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Did we have a motion? We did. Let's keep, we did.
Yeah.
And a second.
Then yes.
D'Isio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
All right, that is 7-0. Motion has passed, and the resolutions are adopted. Now I'll move on to item H. And so first of all, clerk, would you read the resolution to start with?
Item H is a resolution approving the Washington State Allocation Agreement governing the allocation of funds paid by the Purdue Bankruptcy Sacklers and Certain Opioid Manufacturers and participation in the Purdue, Allogin, Amneal, Apitex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis settlements.
Thank you. We just wanted you to pronounce all of those. So, Councilman, Glenn, you asked this item to be removed. What are your thoughts?
I just, I was reviewing it, and it says that Yakima, city of Yakima is going to get 0.6% of $122 million, and I thought, then as I read through and saw some of the other things, the attorneys that presented the case get 15%, so they're going to get 15, 20 million dollars for representing the case. And then the overhead or the management fee that the state takes out is another 10%. And I look at the whole thing, and I just say, this is insane that they take this kind of money when we have such a severe need. $600,000 really isn't very much money to get as a city, and it'll be over a 15-year period. About $122 million. And here we are, the 10th largest city in the state, and we have a severe need, and it's just amazing to me that the state wants to keep so much for overhead and other things. The other thing is, the state keeps 50% of the funds themselves, and then they only allocate 50% to the counties and cities. And I just think it's awful, and I want everybody to know. I'm going to go ahead and vote for it because it'll be money, but it's still ugly in my mind.
I think you'd find some agreement. Any other comments, my counsel? Questions? Okay. Then you've read the resolution. We'll take a motion?
I move to adopt item H.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to approve item H. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Byers?
Yes.
D'Isio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, the vote, motion passes 7-0, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. And thank you, Councilman Glenn, for clarifying the financial reality of that. All right. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're going to move into department items. The first is item A, an ordinance authorizing establishment of special revenue fund 184 for lodging tax fund. And Craig Warner, Director of Finance, is going to present to council.
Good evening, council. Before you is an ordinance to establish a new fund, fund number 184. It's called our Lodging Tax Fund. In the past, the county or the city has always received their lodging tax funds, and that money comes in, and it's already predetermined how much goes to the Visitors Convention Center and to the Capitol Theater, et cetera. So that money comes in, and it gets deposited into those areas. For transparency, for us to be able to make sure that we can show easier where this money, how much we collect and where it goes, we felt it would be best to create an actual fund, so the money will all be deposited in there, and then from that point, all the money will be dispersed out. So it'll be much cleaner when council or the public asks us where, what money we collect, and where does it go. It's all in one place. So that's the reason for the new fund.
Any questions, council? I just want to thank you because I think it just adds to the transparency we're all working on together. So, thank you.
I would move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Roy to pass the ordinance. And can we have the ordinance read, please?
This is an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a special revenue fund 184 Lodging Tax Fund specifying sources of revenue for such fund and designating the purposes of and the manner of authorizing expenditures from such fund.
Thank you.
D'Isio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes. So at 7-1, the motion passes, and so does the ordinance. Thank you, council. We'll move on to item B, and I'm glad you're staying up here, Ms. Warner. It's another ordinance authorizing establishment of a special revenue fund 185 for affordable housing fund. Take your way.
This was, the state gives us a tax credit against some of the state sales tax that they collect. I believe council probably acted on that about four or five years ago. We started collecting it in 2001. At that point, the city probably should have created a special fund, which is what we're asking to do today, so that we could set that money aside. It has to be used for affordable housing, and there's very specific RCWs that we have to follow. The money's been being put in our general fund, and ultimately, with this change, what we will do is take all of that money that's been collected, because I believe there's, there hasn't been any of that money spent at this point, and put into this fund. It'll be about $870,000, I believe, to date, and ultimately, then, that money will be available, and we will, again, be able to track what it is and where we spend it.
Questions, my counsel? Again, just...
The thing I have about that is, we've got that money sitting there, and over the last five years, it's probably lost half of its value. What, why aren't we using that money in a more, you know, do we need to come to work with builders, or how do we go about the process of utilizing this money and getting it put to work instead of just letting it sit there?
Yeah, I think this is one of the, oh, go ahead, Ricky. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to add, I think we can get the detail. There's some rules in the ordinance that were created about that fund, and it's for, I think, right now, it's affordable housing, but it's distincted, it's designated for multifamily, certain types of development. I think Sarah could probably give us more detail. It can be changed, yes.
We took it back to the state standards. That was what we did.
So I think if the council wants to put out an RFP or create the program, we only have the guidelines in the ordinance. The council has never created a program for people to apply, although there are ways for people to apply to connect, I think, their multifamily where there were. for people to apply to connect, I think, their multifamily where they were. But we did change it, and so I think that what needs to happen next is that the council needs to have a decision, a discussion about like how, what kind of program you want to run, how you want to use the money, what your options are, and we can pull what other communities are doing. Nearly everyone, not nearly, many, many jurisdictions retained that 0.1% for affordable housing. So there are lots of examples of what people have done with their money, and we're happy to bring those back for you at a study session and then walk through what you can do with the money, what you can't do with the money, and have you decide how you want to move forward with that.
Thank you.
How do we go about starting that process? Do we need to get a resolution now, or do we just?
We would, under other business, we'd make a motion to bring it back to counsel for a study session. Hold on, you can do it when you-
I'll forget by then.
I wrote it down, that's right. I'll do it, I'll do it.
Don't worry. I would say, too, we haven't lost any value, it's just been collecting money, so.
Well, that's one way of looking at it.
It's been gaining value.
If you don't believe in inflation, then I agree with you.
I never said that.
So first of all, we need to have the ordinance read, please.
This is an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a special revenue fund 185 Affordable Housing Fund specifying sources of revenue for such fund and designating the purposes of and the manner of authorizing expenditures from such fund.
I think we need a motion.
Did we have a motion? No. All right, I would move to pass the ordinance.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Roy to pass the ordinance as read. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DCO?
Yes.
It passes seven zero, and the ordinance is passed. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Oh, wait, you're still up here. You're not going anywhere, okay. So item C is a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or director of finance and budget to issue statements of official intent for reimbursing certain capital project expenses. And again, Mr. Warner's going to present to counsel.
Yes, thank you. So this resolution is, is a little bit different. Basically, what happens is this is related to our capital projects that we would want to go all the way to capital bonds with. And one of the challenges with that is, is a lot of time projects start and take a long time to create. They may go for four, five, six, seven, eight, nine years, where you're actually having costs upfront, where you're, you're looking to design, you're looking to find the funding, you're, you're going through this whole process. And ultimately, if you want to bond for a larger project, usually you want to bond right around when the capital construction is going to start, because you only usually have up to three years to spend those bond proceeds before you get into something that I won't use the term-
Teased him about it.
Yeah, I got teased about it, so I won't use the term arbitrage, but that's what it is.
I dared him not to say it.
I know.
There it is.
So, so what happens is, is a lot of times you have some costs upfront before you get to that point where you sell bonds. With this resolution, if you, if, if the city manager or I are, sign an intent, an affidavit upfront, all of those costs before that we collect for that project before we bond are all reimbursable from the bond proceeds. If we don't do that, if we don't do that intent before, they're not eligible. So that's really what this is for, to make sure that we protect ourselves. There may be times where a project goes down the road, we've signed one of those, and the project doesn't go anywhere, or we find funding from a state or federal grant and we don't have to bond. This doesn't do anything to stop that. This also doesn't take any of the control away from the city council. Anytime we got to a point before we bond, that definitely has to come before the council for your review and approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions, counsel?
Is this a common approach throughout the state or country?
It is. You can do it this way, which would be to do the blanket resolution, or you could do every single project, and we just didn't think that that was feasible with all of the things that are, that are going forward, so.
How was it done in the past?
As far as I know, it wasn't. So this is one that we want to make sure that we have put in there. We worked with Deanna Gregory from Pacifica Law, I believe, to make sure that, that we had this down properly. But this was something that we recognized just as Mike Bailey, the interim finance director, was leaving in May, and felt like this was something we needed to get, get in front of the council.
Why haven't we done this?
Is it? Um, you know, I've, I haven't been here long enough to be able to answer that question.
None of us-
I mean, it's, it's possible that council did it individually by project, I'm not sure. But this is just kind of a, of a more blanket approach, and I, and, and working with Deanna, we felt like this was probably the better approach.
Thank you. Yeah, I like it better. All right. So Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution of the City of Yakima, Washington, appointing the city manager and/or director of finance and budget for the purpose of designating certain, certain expenditures for reimbursement from tax exempt bonds that may be authorized and approved by the city for issuance in the future.
Thank you.
I'd move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to adopt the resolution as read, and we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DCO?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel. The motion passes seven zero, the resolution is adopted. It just makes sense, because it's kind of a self-protection for the city in those situations, that if we can recoup those costs with the bond, or cover them with the bond, then we would be able to do that, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Item D is a resolution authorizing an operation license agreement with Yakima Valley Trolleys, the nonprofit, and, well, hello, Bill. You snuck right up there, Mr. Preston. Our community development director is going to present to counsel.
Good evening, counsel. Bill Preston, Community Development Director. So a couple of weeks ago, September 2nd, I think it was, we had the operating license with the Yakima Valley Trolleys before you, and it was noted that they had the 2024 end date. It surprised me, as I mentioned. Apparently, there was a understanding from the Yakima Valley Trolleys that, that we were going to extend that to 2034, out for 10 years. So that change was made back in February, and I did not catch it. That's on me, didn't see it. And so it got carried all the way through, thus my surprise then. Other than that, there were no other changes to the agreement that were necessary, so it, it, it is as it was presented then. We've just changed the date to 2025 through 2029.
To 2034.
No, it's 2029.
No, 2029. It's only, it's only five years.
Well, the current, Sarah and I keep running into, we're having money problems as a city, and I'm pretty sure before the year is out next year, we're going to have some really tough and ugly decisions to make. And at the end of the day, I like the trolleys, I think it's a wonderful idea, but if you don't have the money, you can't play the game. And I think that I would rather keep Franklin Pool open than have the trolleys. I would rather have a senior center than have the trolleys. And so it, with this kind of a situation, the money situation that we're in, I'm thinking that we need to set it up where the trolley system can operate on their own funds and not use city funds.
Well, part of the, part of the situation is that the city owns the trolleys, so it's in large part our responsibility as well. This contract does not make any decision on anything in the future, it's just a contract so they can continue operating as they are. That's all we're left up to-
I don't have a problem if we, if we let them use a facility rent-free, but the, the idea of using city revenue when we're in such a desperate financial situation is the issue that I'm wrestling with.
What's our financial contribution?
So currently, there is, out of the general fund, which Craig has explained a couple of times that the money gets moved around back and forth, but out of the Public Works budget, out of the Streets budget, Scott transfers $10,000 out of his Streets budget over to the Trolley Fund, and that funds the administration costs, so water, sewer, power, there's some advertisements and some other stuff in there that, that is covered by that $10,000. There's also two, roughly $2,000 in franchise fee, I guess, it's cable, renting of our poles for cable lines that go over, and that goes in there. So there's roughly about $12,000, give or take, that goes into the Trolley Fund every year. And what comes out of it is that $10,000 in admin costs. Plus, there's another, over the last couple of years, it's, it's the insurance cost, which is our insurance that we cover their operations.
Like five-ish?
Yeah, it's, it's 42, 45, 4,700 in the last year, so it's roughly that. So, give or take, 15 is coming out, 12 is going in, so there's, they're running around a $3,000 deficit. There is a balance in there. Last I saw, it was around $47,000. I think it was at either beginning or the projected end of this year. So that is what's covering that deficit right, right now.
Okay, and then, follow-up to that, do we have any year-to-date financial or ridership numbers for '24?
So currently, I do not have the 2024 annual report. I do have 2021, 22, and 23, although I did hear Greg mention some earlier, so I think those numbers that he mentioned probably would make it into that report.
Okay, well, thank you.
So ridership, we don't have any idea?
Um, not actual numbers from the trolley folks, no.
If we wanted, like, last Labor Day, how many did they, how many riders did they have that day? It was a holiday just a couple of weeks ago.
You would need to ask the trolley board themselves.
And I think, you know, I saw a copy of that report, that it would be, it would be that, if the council wants to know that, the correct thing to ask for that in the annual report, that they would actually provide the actual number of riders that they have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why 2024 report was never compiled?
I don't know why it was not submitted yet, I do not know.
It's difficult for me to make a financial decision when we don't have all the financial information to make that decision. So that's kind of my, where I sit.
Yeah, if we weren't wrestling with a budget deficit, you know, it's a great PR idea, and, but I can't see a reason to keep spending, we got to cut money somewhere, and it's more important for the city to have firemen and policemen than it is to have a trolley system. And even though it isn't very much money, you got to start somewhere, every dollar adds up.
Any further comments?
I do have a couple of questions. It would be nice, I don't know if we can allow Greg to answer, the, the numbers that were presented in public comment tonight, I mean, there were percentages and different things like that, but what, what was the, like, what was the total amount of actual, you know, is that 500 people, is that 5,000 people riding those things? Because those percentages can be statistically misleading or, or accurate at the same time. And so that's something I was wondering if it's possible for us to ask that question to the trolley team that is here tonight.
Well, we, I don't know, do you have that information tonight? Don't, yeah, you would need time for that.
What I can share is that in, in anticipation of the, of the future conversation regarding the capital improvements to, to, to the track, the trolley board did supply me with a presentation that they were going, I think they're planning on giving, I can just kind of share a couple of little things about, you know, just to kind of give you a little bit better idea. They did point out that in, in 20, in 2019, their gross revenues were 45,000 and change. And then, you know, adjusted for inflation, those would go up for the next five years. And then their current revenues are roughly, you know, give or take 20 grand and change. So they, they share that there's roughly a $20,000 a year loss due to them not being able to operate. So that number is in the presentation they were going to give, I'm not sure if that would be in the report or not. And then most of the rest of this particularly revolves around the, the numbers that I think both Greg and Ken shared as far as ridership, where they're coming from and those kinds of things.
Well, they seem to have a lot of emphasis on the idea of going all the way up to Seela, but is the right-of-way, once we cross the Natchez River, we're out of Yakima, have, has permissions been secured from the property owners in the City of Seela to continue to maintain and use that railroad, or is any kind of agreement there? I know that the Seela City Council wouldn't even entertain a motion to consider it.
So currently, the, the railroad, or the trolley line that goes north of the river is on BNSF right-of-way by an easement, so we have permission for, to run the trolleys on there. In 1983, when the city sold the track in Seela back to the City of Seela, we entered into a 50-year lease, or not a lease, 50-year agreement with the City of Seela to be on their property in the, within the city limits, going up to the Trolley Gazebo right now. So that lease would expire, or not lease, that agreement would expire in 2043. So right now, we do have permission to be where we are.
They haven't assumed any responsibility for maintenance or care of the tracks.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
The City of Seela has no interest in, in participating in the repair or the maintenance of the tracks.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but what I can say is that when I first arrived in 2021, there were repairs needed at the crossing on Southern, which is that first street that coming into Seela, and that was our responsibility. And so Public Works took care of that.
Now, once again, I, I love the idea, it'd be great, but I, I can't see continuing to utilize city funds when we're in such a tight money situation.
I have a question. Has, has Yakima conducted a SEPA environmental study on the impact of the trolley going into Seela?
So the SEPA for the construction of tracks would be part of, I feel like I need to talk to somebody, but I don't have anybody to look to, so it's, it's really weird, it's really weird. I want to look at somebody. So, so the projects themselves, the capital projects, all go through SEPA. So that's, that's, will happen when we go to any of those capitals. This before you today is just the operating agreement, and under normal circumstances, we would not go through SEPA on this. However, we do need to look into this further.
Actually, can I add something to that?
Yes.
So we, I think, I don't know if SEPA occurred on the operating agreement the first time we entered into it, and we haven't really had enough chance or time since we got the letter from Mr. Carmody saying that SEPA was required. So although normally in agreements, like for other things, we don't go through SEPA, before I categorically say we absolutely don't need to go through SEPA on this renewal of the agreement, my suggestion is, if there's going to be a motion to continue the operating, approve the operating agreement tonight, that it be conditioned on a SEPA evaluation if necessary. And that will give Mr. Martin, the planning manager, and myself, more time to look into the SEPA thing, and then do the SEPA before the city signs the agreement. But because I think that we haven't really had an adequate amount of time, SEPA is very complicated and very specific to the facts, and there's, I did a preliminary search, and I think there's a couple more things we need to look into.
How long can it take?
Sarah? Yes, go ahead.
Sarah, how much is a SEPA study? How much would that cost, do you know?
Well, we would be doing the SEPA because it's our, our property, probably. And so I, I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, so I don't know exactly how much it is. I don't know what we would determine as far as if it was a mitigated determination of non-significance, or a determination of non-significance, or an EIS, because we haven't filled out the paperwork, and we don't make any decisions before getting an application, even our own. So it's hard to say. Once the SEPA application is submitted and deemed complete, there's a notice period for interested parties to comment on the SEPA. So, it might take some time. I don't know if Mr. Preston knows off the top of his head the fee schedule, most of us don't, but there is.
How much time does it take typically? Or averagely?
SEPA's aren't typical. And so, I mean, they're typical that we do them, but they're typical for capital projects, so I really have no frame of reference for this. I, I don't know.
I think a typical SEPA with a determination of non-significance takes two to four weeks, approximately. That's assuming, really, there are no comments that need to be addressed either, so it could be, it could be more than that, depending on how the SEPA turned out.
So, is this sounding like we should table this until that decision is made, whether we need to have a SEPA?
My suggestion is if, if there is a motion to approve the agreement, that it be subject to SEPA. That, that's all I'm saying. I'm not asking for it to be tabled, I'm just saying if the council, if there's a motion to approve it, we would ask for time to do the SEPA before the city manager signs the agreement. So you'd be authorizing the city managers to sign the agreement after a SEPA is conducted, if necessary. But that, it does not have to be your motion, that's not up to me.
And just for clarification, their current agreement does expire on September 30th. So if the motion to include SEPA, their, that timeframe, it would expire. Their current agreement would expire.
The result of that could be just changing the date of the agreement to after the SEPA. There may be a gap in there of, of time, but that's one option.
I know that they have an annual Halloween run, which is one of their major events, and that'll be right at the, right at the end of October. So, I think if, if there are concerns, then the council would agree to have the city manager sign the contract if a SEPA is required. We need to even research that, so.
I mean, we were presented this document.
Today.
Sometime this afternoon. It's a long little aspect here, so, and really don't have a legal opinion on any of it.
Not on the SEPA issue, which I think is the main issue for the operating agreement. The other issues that are brought up are more for the capital project.
Yep, which we're not making a decision on today, so, we're just making a decision that in the meantime, can they operate? That's our, that's our question.
Yeah, I kind of already made plans coming up, so, I'm willing to give it another three years, see, see what happens.
Well, it's for five, it's for five years.
Five years, yeah.
And either party has the right to give a 60-day notice to end the contract, so.
And if we approve the contract, then the funds are committed, we have to spend them, right?
They will be in the budget as presented, yes. 10,000 for administration, and then Scott will keep 10,000 for roadway maintenance.
If needed.
If needed, correct. And then, there's another, essentially, 5,000 in insurance that will be covered by their fund balance.
So they have a fund balance to draw that out of?
Yeah, give or take 47,000, I think is what I said earlier.
And like you said, for how long would that go?
At 3,000 a year, 15 years, basically.
So we cover it for, basically, 15 years?
The other thing that I would probably argue for is, we've got, you know, 10 blocks of service right now, and it's there, it's operating, it's usable. Going back to Seela, we're talking about millions in additional expense, and everybody's arguing how much it is.
Well, that's yet to be determined, and that's a future discussion, so.
I think we probably, there's no reason to keep the door open if the city is not gonna fund that, and I, I don't think it would be responsible of the city to fund that, so I'd like to see us make a decision that we just keep the trolley at the existing size if we renew it, and not worry about going up into Seela unless other funds can be found other than the city.
Well, the operating budget, or the operating contract that we're talking about tonight, will do that, will allow them to operate as they are right now, and any future decisions on development will be after tonight.
Yeah, I heard a lot of good comments during public comment, especially collaboration with the schools, I know.
Yeah, that was new information.
Local schools, yeah, so, it's kind of difficult as well. And I know Deputy Mayor Brown had asked for clearance about the cost, operation costs of the trolley, so, I know it's, I know we had prioritized, and I hate to say that, maybe for me myself, trolley wasn't above, but other things like pools, like we mentioned before, but I think it's, I know, it's not clear enough, or, I see a lot of things happening in the future too, so, I'm still on the fence as well.
Well, if we make a motion, I'm, usually I do not make motions, but I'm willing to make ones, and it's still within my abilities as councilmember to do that. I would make a motion to agree to move forward, authorize the city managers to sign it, depending on what we found out about the SEPA, and what the review is.
Second.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, then, I'll.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm processing. The, is there a way to do the operating agreement to not allow the, like, is there a way to do the operating agreement without putting the city in a financial aspect? So can we do the operating agreement, say, you can operate the trolleys, we just have no money to, to do this at this moment?
Yes, you can, I mean.
I'm just thinking, like, there's money set aside that's already there, 43-whatever-thousand, that's already set in a budget. There's, there's other aspects to, I mean, there's other ways that they generate revenue and can pay for their things, much like any other nonprofit and group that works out in the public, they have to, you know, raise their own capital and different stuff, they don't ask the city to fund it. So that would be something for me, is like, can, can we just say, yeah, you can operate it, but we're just, we're not gonna pay the bills?
Yes, if you want to change any of the terms of what is presented in front of you, then either you should direct us to go back and renegotiate it, or you can amend the agreement, and then they will have a chance to review it. The one thing that the city does need to pay for, though, is the insurance, the building and the assets are owned by the city of Yakima, so we would, we, we need to hold some sort of insurance on those. So that's the 40, about $5,000 a year.
It's like any other property that the city owns, we have responsibility for it, so.
I got, I got a question. It does bring in, you know, as he says, so much tourism comes in from the trolley, you know, I guess whatever percentage it is, we bring in people. Is it possible, I know we have some funds out there, I mean, like, the LTAC, is that something that they could bring on, possibly? Since it does seal the tourism and stuff?
The LTAC committee can look at that?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting, that we look at the LTAC, possibly, you know, keeping historic, I mean, there's any help the LTAC can do to, they do bring in tourism, it's a nonprofit, the city owns the property, so.
A big part of that is, is the city owns property.
Yeah.
Which is part of what the RCW is in the state for LTAC funds.
Yep, so I'm, I see we look at, look at, go into LTAC and see if they're willing to pick up some of this, you know, if they got some money for them to operate, would be awesome. This way, you know, they could still stay open, and it's not cutting a lot from our budget, and they could still operate.
The only, I'll just play devil's advocate, is we don't know how many people they're bringing in, because we can't, I mean, they're 21 months past on their reporting.
Oh, nine, technically, because they're only, yeah, well, yeah, we don't have the 24 numbers yet.
Right, so we, I mean, we just don't know. And asking us to make a commitment to this without knowing all the details is just irresponsible, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree with that. 62% of how many? He gave, they gave us a figure of 62%, but we don't know what the, that figure is. It could be 62% of 20 people are from out of town. So, we need, we need better numbers, in my opinion.
That was what I was bringing up earlier, is, you know, the stats sound great, but I need to know a total ridership, like, what does that look like? So, that's what I was trying to ask earlier.
So, can I go back to something that Deputy Mayor Brown mentioned about funding it? So, while they could do some of those admin costs, I think, from other sources, we still have Scott's street budget that needs to be addressed, because if there are repairs along the roadway, yeah, Scott doesn't have much, right? He only has 10 grand in there, but, you know, the, the street pop, when the rail popped at Fruitvale, that was 45,000, right? And while they did get some grant for that, the rest of that, 25,000 came out of the streets fund. So, that is, it's still our road, right? The road is still there, there's still some issues, so I, I don't know how you, I'm not sure how to address that piece of it in this agreement. I think there's a need for us to maintain our road.
What?
Yeah. I have a vested interest in that. I'm a little selfish that way.
Now, it's, you know, like I say, it goes back to the same thing, and if we had unlimited funds, if we had a budget surplus, yeah, let's do it, it's cool, it's a nice idea. But then, when we don't even have any idea how many people are using it, that's a real concern.
So I would, I would amend my own motion, to say, to give the city, the manager authority to move ahead, depending on whether or not we even have to have a SEPA review, and what happens with that, and also, when we have, that we would have information on ridership.
I'll second that.
I'm wondering.
You second the amendment?
Yeah, second the amendment, how's that?
So, all of those in favor of amending the original motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, so, now we go back to the original motion as amended, which is for the city manager to move ahead, signing the contract, dependent on whether or not we have to have a SEPA review, and if we have, and what it says, and the numbers on ridership. Okay.
Oh, we second that?
Yes.
All right, perfect, got it.
Thank you, so we, so I have motion, the mayor's motioned in, and Councilman Roy has seconded, actually, for all of those, I'm sorry, I should have been calling that out. So, let's just do a show of hands, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Two, three, I didn't see your vote.
I think you should take a roll call vote, aren't you voting on the resolution?
Yeah, we have to take a roll call.
Oh, do it, okay, let's do it, that'll make it more clear.
Do you want me to read the resolution title?
Yes, please.
This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Yakima Valley Trolleys to operate, maintain, and promote the city of Yakima's electric railway system and museum. Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
No.
So, Brown?
Hold on.
Yeah, I, I think we, we actually were just voting on an amended motion.
Well, you had the motion.
It's passing the resolution.
With the amendments.
But there's some conditions on it.
Yes.
And she's got them in the minutes, I'm sure.
You know what it is? Just make sure we know what it is.
So passing this resolution with the amendments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's not amendments to the resolution.
Right.
Right.
It's stipulations.
Stipulations.
Yes.
Can we restate those?
Well, the stipulation would be that, that we.
Subject to.
Subject to having, if necessary, a required, a SEPA review, and having the numbers of ridership.
So is the.
You don't know when you're gonna get the numbers, it's not very specific as far as when you want the numbers.
When, what do we, like, are we just waiting to get numbers, and then do we then need to vote on if that's worth?
Acceptable, exactly.
Yep.
So.
So we would put the ordinance in effect, but then it would be when the reports come, then we could readdress the issue.
Yes, you can do it that way.
That's not what's out here right now, right? Currently. There is a third option.
What's the third option?
To extend the old one.
Yes, that is. You're in the middle of a vote, so you have to vote on this, because some people have already voted, I think.
Yeah. So how far do we get in the roll call?
I was last.
Yeah, we have two, two members.
Yeah.
Okay, who did you call?
Roy and Berg.
Okay, and we have one yes.
One yes, one no.
And one no.
Do you want me to continue the roll call vote?
Please do.
Brown?
No.
Byers?
Yes.
Dicio?
No.
Glenn?
No.
Herrera?
Yes.
So, the vote is four to three, so the motion fails, now we can take another motion.
What was that?
That's Genesis.
Oh, somebody in my house here.
It like ricocheted above me. Okay, what was that, second motion?
Mm-hmm, what is it you were making?
I would move to extend the old contract. I don't know what the number is, or the old operating agreement.
The one that's currently in place through September 30th.
The one that's currently in place in front of us, yeah.
Until September 30th, to November 15th.
That's a good date.
Second.
Nice, yes.
Till after the election, so we know where our money situation is.
I don't know, I'm just throwing out dates here.
Okay.
Why don't we just make it till the end of the year?
Why don't we get November 30th, just right to the end of November?
All right, November 30th.
Can we do the end of the year? Because they have a Christmas party too.
Oh, they have a Christmas party too, don't they?
There's, there's, there's a mo.
Through the end of December.
So would you restate your motion in its entirety, please?
I would move to extend the current operating agreement through the end of, the end of December.
I will second that, with the idea that we can get the reports that we need, and the information that we want, and whether we have to have a SEPA or not.
Is that the right motion you're looking at me for?
No, that's the right motion.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and a second by Councilman Glenn, to extend the current contract until December 31st of this year. All right, let's take a roll call vote, please.
And for the staff to know, is it would be pertinent for us to try to figure these things out before December 31st, hopefully in November, so that we can have a new thing, or not have a new thing, whatever it is, come January. We're not waiting until the end of December, so, anyways.
So, you said for staff to know these things, I kind of want to make sure I know what these things are.
We're looking for a clarification of whether or not the SEPA review is required, and we're looking for numbers from the trolley.
So SEPA and the annual report is what I'm hearing, those two things.
Yes.
The ridership.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
Thanks, Bill, for asking the question.
Take a roll call vote, please.
Berg?
No.
Brown?
Yeah.
Byers?
Yes.
Dicio?
Yes.
Glenn?
I'll go yes on this one.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Sure, yes.
All right, the vote is six to one, motion passes. Thank you, council. All right.
So, just to clarify, my direction, to go back and prepare Supplement Six through December 31st of 2025.
Yes.
Okay, will do.
Thank you, Mr. Preston.
2025.
2025, yes.
All right, and as a matter of saving time and other things, I'd be no city manager update tonight?
I think we heard a lot last week from me.
And, so that brings us to other business.
I got it, if you want, maybe not.
Go ahead.
All right.
I told you I'd forget.
I would.
We're trying to help you.
And so that brings us to other business.
I, I got it if you want. Maybe not.
Go ahead.
All right.
I told you I'd forget.
I would.
We're trying to help you.
I'd like to move to direct staff at a future study session to direct us what we can do with our affordable housing fund.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Berg and a second by Councilman Herrera to a direct staff to bring back to city a future study session.
What we can do with our affordable.
What we can do with our affordable housing money.
Can I ask one question for clarity? You want to know, like, the RFP or of that, is that how you're interpreting this?
I'm interpreting that as we will bring back a presentation about the current statutory allowed options and some examples of what people, other jurisdictions in the state are doing under those requirements.
Thank you.
I think at the same time, if we could, I think there's some state programs that have been allocated that are supposed to help with those. And I know my brother happens to live in Ellensburg, and he's told me about things that they're doing over there that we're not doing here, so.
You can bring the information in at some discussion. It'd be great.
Yeah, I think if we can include that.
Ellensburg also passed the, the sales tax for affordable housing too, so they have more, they have that funding source as well. And they are doing some things. And we can bring Ellensburg's examples. That's not.
So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to adjournment.
Any other business? No?
Please, no.
I would move to adjourn to our next council regular meeting on October 7th, my birthday, here in City Hall, council chambers.
Well, if we forget, happy birthday now.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to adjourn until our next regular city council meeting, October 7th, 2025, 5:30 PM here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.